Commissioner Brassad?
Here.
Commissioner Reiner?
Here.
Commissioner Schulte?
Here.
Commissioner Look?
Here.
Commissioner Gammash?
Here.
All right, we have two missing commissioners this morning. We will move right into item number four, which is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner Schulte. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammash?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item five is consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending April 7th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Gammash. Second, second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammash?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item six is approval of minutes for April 11th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Brassad. Second, second by Commissioner Schulte. Any additions, subtractions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Under Chair's remarks, we have two items. The first is a recognition of our detention deputies, correction officers, and the correctional employees in Anoka County as part of the National Correctional Officers Week, which is May 7th through May 13th this year. I'm going to ask Commissioner Brassad, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, to speak about the important roles of these employees in our county. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our correctional employees are a devoted group of trained men and women who serve the county's jail and correctional facilities, and the jobs they perform are essential to maintaining public safety in our county. They work in a challenging and sometimes dangerous environment that requires integrity, attention to detail, and a tactful approach to detailing with a range of inmates. In addition to keeping our public safe by ensuring inmates serve their sentences, correctional employees also play a key role in rehabilitating offenders, which helps society as a whole. Since the work they do is conducted in a secure, private location, members of the public often don't get the chance to learn about these individuals, and that's why it's important that we take the time during the first week of May to recognize their contributions to our communities. We have two guests with us here today who will speak more about our correctional employees, Sheriff Brad Weiss and Dylan Workington, the Director of our Community Corrections. Welcome both of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad, and members of the board. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for recognizing this particular week. My name's Dylan Workington. I'm the Director of Community Corrections here for Anoka County. These staff, as you indicated, Commissioner Brassad, just do an outstanding job in a variety of acolytic components. They work every day. It's a 365 days a year job, holidays, weekends, evening, nights, every shift. The Anoka County Workhouse, for instance, since it's opened, has never closed, and so it's always available and always there for our courts specifically, as this is primarily for sentenced offenders, to serve at this particular facility. Each day, they deal with complex issues to include critical incidences, health-related concerns, their coaching, their modeling. We provide an atmosphere where individuals can go out to work and come back. We're currently participating in training people to do specific kinds of work so that when they're released, they can continue with that. We have a substance use disorder treatment program right in the complex itself. These staff and this facility is about making life better, and so I'm really proud of these staff. What we do in corrections is we'll take, during that week of May 7th through the 13th, we'll do some recognition components on each shift. We used to have some of our staff come to the county board meeting, but we just actually don't have enough staff to do that with the components of all of the shift work that is required. So I just want to say also, as a director, I super appreciate the work of the leadership at these facilities, specifically at the workhouse for us, as well as the supervisory staff that work in these facilities and guide the staff as well. So appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I just wanted to add to the comments of Mr. Workington. As the newly-elected sheriff of Anoka County, I have responsibility now for running the Anoka County Jail. At any given time, we're housing upwards of 250 inmates. For those in the public that don't understand, the people come into the jail are pre-sentenced, meaning they're either freshly arrested or they're waiting on a court process, but that's the difference between us and the correctional environment that Mr. Workington supervises. But like was mentioned before, the work that goes on within that building goes unnoticed. The general public isn't going to see it. Alls they hope for is that it's done well, and I want to assure the public that it is done well, and I thank you so much for recognizing the staff that do that, that quietly show up every day, and truly they are committed to making those people be better when they leave as opposed to when they got there. That ultimately is our mission. We have a public safety purpose. We don't, yes punitive, or being punitive is part of the process, but in the end, the public safety purpose is to make sure that we have a better Anoka County for the sake of somebody being in that facility. So once again, thank you to the board for recognizing our staff. We too internally will be doing special things for our staff for the week of May 7th to let them know that they're appreciated on your behalf. So, thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff. And Dylan, thank you for sharing with us the remarkable work that the correctional employees do. As Commissioner Brassad indicated, they're not always in the public eye, and so they're sometimes overlooked in terms of recognition, so we definitely want to take this opportunity to recognize them. And at this time, I'd like to offer Resolution 2032-42, which honors the hard work and dedication of our county's correctional staff and provides special recognition to them during National Correctional Officers Week. Any discussion? Nope. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Our second item under Chair's remarks today is similar to the first, as we recognize our law enforcement officers as part of the National Peace Officers Week, which is the second week of May. Monday of that week, May 15th, is Peace Officers Memorial Day, when we honor officers who have been killed or injured in the line of duty. Again, I'm going to ask Commissioner Brassad to lead us on this important acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our peace officers routinely put themselves in harm's way to protect the lives and property of our citizens. They also perform other essential public safety functions in our communities, such as responding to accidents, investigating crime, ensuring safety at large public events, protecting and educating students in our schools, and testifying in court. The roles of peace officers are varied, and it takes a special kind of person to excel in this field. Thankfully, here in Anoka County, we have excellent peace officers who have dedicated themselves to the duties and responsibilities of this important career. While many of us know about the roles of peace officers, truly understanding what they go through daily is difficult. They experience situations, they experience situations most of us will never have to deal with, and at the end of the day, they have to go home, find a way to decompress, and then do it all over again the next day. It's truly amazing how our peace officers serve our community, and we're certainly thankful we have men and women who are willing to devote themselves to protecting our citizens. For this, I am eternally grateful. Sheriff Weiss will now speak further about the contributions of our peace officers. Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad, Mr. Chair, rest of the Commissioners. We're switching gears slightly. The law enforcement memorial week is the week after the correctional, recognize the correctional staff, and it's more of a somber occasion in that the point is to remember those that gave their lives in service to their communities. Of course, the state of Minnesota just went through a funeral. Pope County Deputy Josh Owen gave his life in service of his citizens in Pope County. It's humbling to know that that's what he did for the sake of those citizens. We do want to remember those that have gone before him, and I would encourage people who are internet savvy especially to go to the National Law Enforcement Memorial page, where you can read some of the remarkable stories of heroism. But while it's a somber occasion too, I do want to transition to the idea of instilling in young people that it's an honorable profession, in that we need bright, caring, compassionate 18-year-old kids say to themselves, you know what, I think I can do that, and that they make that commitment to pin on a badge one day, whether it's for Anoka County or for one of the cities within Anoka County. So again, on behalf of the law enforcement officers of Anoka County, I want to thank the county board for recognizing them via resolution and not forgetting the sacrifices that they make.
Thank you, Sheriff. We are, as of Anoka County, we're so benefited, I think, by the dedicated professionals we have in this field. You know, they're helping our citizens during times of need especially. They're also out there in the community, kind of, you know, touching base with people and getting to know them, and it's just a remarkable job that they do. It cannot be understated at all, and it's an essential component to public safety in our communities. So we're very pleased to offer this resolution here today as well. So if the board would, I'd like to offer Resolution 2023-43, Recognizing Peace Officers Week in Anoka County, and ask the rest of the board to support me in this. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And I will say that we had a county day here with top third of the high schools, Anoka and Andover, and I know the sheriff, I think, you know, he did an outstanding job. There were a lot of questions from kids asking, you know, how do you become a police officer and that sort of thing, so we might have some new recruits from that, and some very bright kids came through for that. You know, as a board, we love to acknowledge our staff's great work, and we get an opportunity today to embarrass one of our own, who received a prestigious national award for his ongoing work on US Highway 10 in Ramsey. I'd like to ask Joe McPherson, our county engineer and chief transportation officer, to introduce a special guest and tell us more about this award. Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe McPherson. I am the chief officer of the Transportation Division and county engineer. And as you just heard, the previous comments here and the acknowledgement of our public service officers, our detention officers, some people see it as a calling, some people see it as just a desire to make their community better, to make it stronger. And similarly, within the Transportation Division, we have a lot of those individuals. Today, we are recognizing one of those individuals. You know, you may think that designing road projects is a simple task, but there's a lot of things that come with it. Sometimes it's dodging fists flying at you from across the table at a public meeting. Sometimes it's meeting with residents in late hours to talk to them about their concerns about the project, about their property, how it's going to impact their business, and really listening to them and determining what is the right path forward. Do we need to change the project? Do we need to accommodate certain things? And I think that's what truly sets those individuals apart. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce a special guest with us today. His name is Wayne Sandberg. He works for Washington County, and he's here on behalf of our NACE delegation to present this award to Jason Orcut. So without further ado, I'll invite Wayne up here.
All right, thank you, Joe. And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as was stated, my name is Wayne Sandberg. I serve as the county engineer for Washington County. I also serve on the Executive Committee of the National Association of County Engineers. We are a 3,000-member-strong organization that represents county engineers all across the United States and into Canada. I serve as the Northwest Regional Vice President, representing the states of Illinois, Wisconsin, Minnesota, North and South Dakota, Wyoming, and Montana. I'm honored to be here today to share some great news about one of your engineers. Now, each year at our annual conference, we, our association, NACE, we present just four awards, and these awards recognize accomplished and dedicated professionals in the field of county engineering. One of those awards is the NACE Program Manager of the Year. This award recognizes a NACE member for outstanding service and meritorious achievement working in a county managing a project. This award was established to recognize significant work by an individual, someone who has demonstrated a commitment to the profession and is an emerging leader in our field. I'm excited to share the news that last week, NACE recognized Anoka County's own Jason Orcut as the 2022 Program Manager of the Year. This is what NACE had to say about Jason. Jason Orcut has a critical role. He is responsible for leading three areas of program delivery, engineering and design, transportation planning, and right-of-way acquisition. Integrating these areas under Jason's leadership has allowed for growth and improvement of all three groups. However, what really sets Jason apart is the innovative way he has enthusiastically taken on the $140 million mega project on US Highway 10. Key components of this project include the construction of four new bridges, four roundabouts, and the reconstruction of a heavily-traveled section of US Highway 10 and 169. Jason also manages the project's financial plan, which includes 13 funding sources, each with its own unique requirements. Anoka County is known for efficient and fiscally responsible project delivery, in large part due to Jason's program delivery leadership. He consistently looks for opportunities to improve relationships, enhance his team's skills, and drive change through strong partnerships and his outstanding leadership. Those are some amazing accomplishments from an amazing man. It is no surprise then that Jason received this well-deserved award. His contributions at Anoka County have been outstanding. He is an inspiration to all of us who work in the field of county engineering. So on behalf of the NACE Executive Board, I would like to say that we are proud to have Jason as a member of our community and look forward to seeing what he will accomplish in the years to come, and we congratulate Jason Orcut as a 2022 recipient of the NACE Program Manager of the Year Award.
Thank you. There's a lot of people that should be thanked on this. There's a lot of fingerprints on this, and it's not just mine. When you look around, I'm fortunate to have most of my team here today, and when I had to give up in front of, I usually don't have a problem talking in front of people, and when you get up in front of 600 people, it's a little bit daunting, but I'd also like to thank all of you because we can't do what we do without the support. It's very clear that many counties do not have what we have, and Joe and Jerry and all of us, we understand that the support you give us is critical to letting us do our job. One thing I will say is, I think there's something like 3,000 counties in the United States, and I think there's 3,000 of these awards that could go out every year. When you think about a shouldering project that we might do, that may not be on the grand scale of something that's visual, but to the nurse driving home that veers off and is able to recover and drive home that we never know about, that's the Project of the Year to me. So, so thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for my team. You know, one unique thing about Highway 10, when I started here, along with some of you, my daughter was six months old. She will be graduating when we advertise Highway 10. So, and that is, that is part because of me and others, but it's also because of the inroads you make getting the money and bringing it back here. When you look at Anoka County, so, and there's one last that I try to think in every public meeting is, it's our residents, our property owners, our taxpayers. They take the brunt of what we do. You know, firemen save your cat out of a tree, we cut your trees down. So it's not, we want to do these things. We do it for the right reasons, so I think our public is owed a huge thank you for letting us do what we do as well. So I appreciate everything, and thank you for the opportunities.
Commissioner Schulte?
Mr. Chair, Jason, congratulations. As you mentioned, there's 3,069 counties in the United States, and to think that every one of them could win, they have a qualified person, but to know that you rose to the top of that, that's pretty special. I mean, if they give away one award a year, that's 3,069 years of awards, and yet you're on top of this one. I enjoyed, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, working with Joe and you and your leadership there. Getting Highway 10 done was something we all envisioned decades into the future. We wanted it done a long time ago, but you made it happen, and you were a big reason it happened on the schedule it did. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason, I just wanted to say that when we heard that you were nominated for this, immediately I wanted to just go, yes, he's got this. This is a shoe-in. We know, you know, firsthand how good you are, not only at your engineering part of your job, but the public interaction. And for us, that's so much of what we hear, you know? We get the complaints, the concerns, and after you've spoken with concerned citizens about some road project, they feel better. They come away and they just have a different, better attitude. So I appreciate your people skills as well. That is as important in your position as your engineering talent. So congratulations. You represent us well, and I'm really glad you're with Anoka County.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to go to an open house in which Jason's been there, or his staff, which are here today. Thanks for coming as well. But, you know, I think, you know, Joe kind of indicated that it's a, can be a stressful situation sometimes, you know? What do you mean you're impacting my property or, you know? And the way these, you know, Jason, the way you settle these people down, the way your staff settles these people down, and kind of explain it through, walk through, it's for these reasons, and you see them all kind of going, okay, all right, well. You know, they don't leave necessarily happy, they're just not angry. They're, you know, they understand the situation, and that's, as Commissioner Brassad said, that's a skill. That is a skill of handling public and walking them through what needs to be done. And so, I mean, just congratulations for this, you know, this award for innovation and the hard work you're doing on Highway 10. I mean, it's phenomenal. I don't know that I run into a person that, first of all, you don't hear, why is this project being done? You hear, when is it going to be done? Which is uncommon usually in highway work. But you don't, I mean, just the flow and everything's been thought through. You know, we've had situations with other agencies we work with where people say, man, this just isn't working, but you don't hear that in this one because of that forethought that's gone into this, and you guys have done just a fantastic job of, you know, in this case, shining a light, a positive light on our community. So we want to congratulate you, thank you, and we just, I mean, we're impressed with the great work you keep putting together there in your, with your team in the office there, so.
Yeah. I think when all else fails, you just tell them it's, like with construction, there's delays and they're upset. It's, I always try to tell them it's like remodeling your bathroom when someone's using it, it might get a little messy, so you have to, you have to add a little humor into these sayings because they're upset, and, but our team is, I would put this team against any, against all 3,000 counties. There's no doubt that, I think we all think the same way. Look for people smarter than we are, and they all make us look good. So this is not my award, this is for everybody on our team, so thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Wayne, for coming in. Yeah, we appreciate that. Okay, lastly, as tomorrow, Wednesday, April 26th, is Administrative Professionals Day. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my sincere gratitude to all our administrative assistants, clerks, and office professionals who work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure the daily operations of Anoka County run smoothly. Your contributions are invaluable, and you're an integral part of our team. Your hard work, dedication, attention to detail do not go unnoticed. Your ability to multitask, problem solve, and remain calm under pressure is truly admirable, and we're grateful for everything you do. So on behalf of Anoka County and Board of Commissioners here, I want to thank you for being an essential part of our team and for all that you do. We hope that you take a moment to celebrate your hard work and achievements this Administrative Professionals Day. Okay, we will move on to committee reports, and we'll start off with the Management Committee. And get right to that. We have under action items, we're considering a restructure fill for administration of parks. We're moving from one FTE to 2.725 FTEs for an interpretive naturalist, and two FTEs for also an interpretive naturalist. Remaining 0.45 FTE is to be eliminated, and also 2.725 FTE interpretive naturalist positions will also be eliminated. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner?
Gammash.
Gammash, sorry. And I was thinking of Brassad down here. Second by Commissioner Brassad. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammash?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item two is consider approving contract C triple zero 9896 with Alaris Financial for Cobra Benefit Administration Services for a three-year term with an approximate annual cost of $8,483, including a three-year rate guarantee contingent upon negotiating a minimum of a 5% performance guarantee. My understanding is that's 10% performance guarantee was negotiated. We had some discussion on that in the Management Committee, and that's come through. We passed out of the Management Committee contingent on that, on that performance guarantee. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gammash. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gammash?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye. And that motion passes. Item three is consider contract C triple zero 9895 with Mercer Health and Benefits LLC for Retiree Benefit Administration Services for a three-year term with an approximate annual cost of $110,000, including a three-year rate guarantee. You'll see that for the Retiree Benefit Administration Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gammash.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammash?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. We will move then to the additional county board agenda, which is also for the Management Committee. And under item number one, there are three different, three different positions. The first is a new restructure fill for administration facilities, management, and construction, where they're moving from 2.6 FTE custodians to, and a new 2.4 FTE custodians to two 1.0 full-time custodians. What we're having is issues hiring part-timers in this area, and so moving to a full-time position offering benefits is something that we're going to try to see if we can try and attract talent for these positions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gammash, second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Gammash?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. The second, item B, is new positions for human services economic assistance. These are four FTE, four full-time FTE positions for associate eligibility specialists, associate eligibility specialists, and this is for requirements from the state, as I understand, for backlogged, backlogged, you want to, a lot of backlogged work.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kinnis, Jessica Lott, the Director of Economic Assistance, the work, the unwinding work for medical assistance, so these positions would help our frontline staff manage the work that we have coming to Minnesota in Anoka County.
Okay. And the question was asked in Management Committee, if, once the funding runs out, then what generally happens to these positions? And what we have is kind of rollover in economic assistance, and so these positions would then be plugged into those vacancies, generally speaking.
That is correct, yep.
Okay. All righty, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad? Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Mr. Gamash.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving on to C, it's a new restructure fill of Human Services, Public Health and Environmental Services. We're moving from a 0.8 FTE intake coordinator and adding a new 0.2 FTE Associate Program Specialist and then turning that into a 1.0 FTE Associate Program Specialist. And you'll see that attached there. Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Any discussion? Sing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We will now move on to the Transportation Committee Report and Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our committee met on April 12th and we have four action items from that committee. First is that the committee recommends approval, approval of a resolution amending Anoka County's bridge priority list. Joe, can you tell us about this?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Joe McPherson. I'm the Chief Officer, the Transportation Division and County Engineer. So this action item relates actually to a resolution we passed last year. Essentially, we maintain a list of priority bridge projects within the county. And really, the purpose of that resolution is, as we're all well aware, there's a number of different funding mechanisms out there that support roadways and bridges. And so, once your bridge reads, reaches a certain sufficiency rating, or in this case, it's an LPI. I can't remember exactly what that acronym stands for, but essentially, it's just the sufficiency rating or the rating of that bridge. Once it reaches a certain threshold, it's eligible for state bridge bond funds. And so, this bridge, based on this spring's inspection, actually, some of the members of the bridge, so there's several things that we look at when we do a physical inspection of the bridge. They were reduced in, not safety, the bridge is still safe, so it's not going to fall down, but some of the elements are starting to show wear and tear. So as we continue to essentially look at those items, monitor them, the sufficiency rating of the bridge comes down, reaches that threshold, and then we're eligible to apply for state bridge bond fundings. That's the whole purpose of this item here, is to make sure that our bridge is on the list and that if we go after the funds, we're eligible to go after them.
Okay. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Item two.
The committee recommends approval of a professional service contract with SRF Engineering for the design and environmental documentation for intersection improvements at Cassa Six, which is Mississippi Street, and Cassa Thirty-Five, Central Avenue in the city of Fridley, and further authorizes the Board Chair and County Administrator to execute said agreement.
Yeah.
Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner, members of the board. So this was a project that we applied for Highway Safety Improvement Program Funds, which is federal funds, and we were recipients of that funding. It covers 90% of the construction costs and the reason this one was eligible is due to the number of crashes at that intersection. It is an always-stop intersection as it sits today. The geometry of that, there's actually four lanes on the west leg and two lanes on the other legs. So it's a little confusing when you're a driver, so likely that leads to a little bit of the confusion with the drivers as they approach that intersection. As such, we need to get this thing rolling. The money's available in 2024. So the purpose of this action item is to start the design. We're going to use SRF as our consultant to get the plans put together, go through the environmental document and all the public engagement that we just talked about earlier to make sure we're building the right project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gamash.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Very happy to receive $800 on this one. That's 90% covering this project is a great, great amount of money we can receive for projects and getting them done. So if there's no further discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item three.
The committee recommends approval of purchase of service agreement amendment number one with Transportation Collaborative LLC for the Cassa Fifty-four corridor study in the cities of Centerville and Lionel Lakes. Joe.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, members of the board. So this is a study that's actually ongoing right now. As this area in Lionel Lakes and Centerville has continued to develop, both with residential developments as well as commercial industrial, the pressure on the roadway there has continued to increase. So like we do with most of our projects, we want to take a step back and do some planning engagement activities with the community, with the local agencies, to make sure that we're looking 20, 30 years down the road for what the needs of that corridor are. And it helps really pave a path for us, no pun intended there, to move forward with future projects, funding applications and the like. So we're at a stage right now, the first part of the contract, and the reason this is being amended, the first part was really fact collection. So we were looking at what the traffic volumes are, running some forecasts, looking at the existing geometry of the roadway and then looking into the future on what are potential alternatives. So at the end of this study, we're going to have alternatives to move forward with, based on what our needs are at the time and where development centers itself over the next several years. This amendment really gets into the next phase of that study, which is public engagement. So meeting with our local elected officials, holding public open houses and really releasing some of that preliminary information that we received through the study. So purpose of the amendment is really the public engagement aspect of this project.
Okay, yes.
And I'd just like to mention too, yes, this corridor is getting very busy. Oftentimes, local police departments need to be called on scene to handle certain events that happen and control traffic. And so, very happy to see this activity taking place. And I'd like to move approval of this agreement, C triple zero nine four three seven eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Moved by Commissioner Reiner. Any further discussion? Sing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that two passes unanimously. Item four.
The committee recommends approval of a contract with BNSF Railway Company to replace the existing concrete crossing service at Cassa Twenty-two Viking Boulevard with the new heavy-duty concrete crossing surface in the city of Oak Grove.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So this item here is actually somewhat associated with the action item we talked about at the last board meeting, which was that concrete repair project that's going to unfold this summer. There's a number of spots along County Road Twenty-two or Viking Boulevard, as well as Crosstown down in Ham Lake, that need to be repaired. And so, at the same time that we're doing those, we're also going to reconstruct the crossing here at Viking Boulevard. Sees a lot of truck traffic and over time, those crossings do start to settle and they break. And so, it's that time where, based on the traffic volumes and what we've seen the last couple of years, it needs to be redone. So we're coordinating the work with BNSF at the same time that we're coordinating the panel replacement adjacent to that crossing.
Joe, there was people driving around this. Is that, was that the report that we were getting?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you were to zoom in on this image, you can actually see where there's tire tracks where people are going around the bump that was formed due to the settlement at the crossing. So very apparent.
Drivers get creative. Okay.
Yeah, they do.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Yep, Commissioner.
I appreciate this. As someone that traveled over during the weekend heading to Refuge Golf Course, there is a bit of a bump there. Curious though, you're mentioning that it's, does it have anything to do with the soils as well? Is that something that we have to work on or is it just the actual concrete piece itself that's breaking up or sinking or doing whatever?
Yeah, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So a little bit of both. When we pull those panels off and we pull off the adjacent concrete panels, we're going to look at the subsoil as well. But if you can envision this in your mind, railroads are built on that ballast, that rock. And it's a crushed rock, so it interfaces and interlocks with each other. Our roadways, though, are built with granular subsoils, they're with a gravel base. So you've got a lot more fines and stuff in there, so the two of them can settle at different rates as well. And so, sometimes that can lead to the issues. So when we pull the panels off, we will look at that and make sure that there's still stability there and support for the concrete.
Okay, quick follow-up?
Yep.
So this seems to be a total road closure type of event, I'm guessing. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and how long do you think it'll take?
So Commissioner, members of the board, at this time, I would say, because of the time you need to cure the concrete, we're probably looking at a couple-week closure here, two to three weeks, weather permitting.
I won't hold it to it.
Yeah.
I'm just preparing people for the.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I think we had it.
We have the motion already.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I think it's Commissioner Brassad and Commissioner Schulte. Any further discussion? Sing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, it came to my attention that we should actually vote on informational item, which is number 12, which is the committee approved the transportation finance principles to be used to communicate with legislators regarding the current unfairness of the transportation funding for the five suburban counties. We are, we have a big day tomorrow. We've got a full morning of meetings with our legislators. We have a press conference going on. And just wanted to let everyone know that we did, we voted on those principles. They passed. And now we should actually get the whole board to vote on that since we're presenting tomorrow at the Capitol.
Okay.
I'll move that.
Is there a motion to approve those principles? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Moved by Commissioner Brassad. We're pulling those up here for the.
Sorry.
Viewing public.
This is something that has been worked on by the five collar counties, Anoka, Carver, Dakota, Scott and Washington. And we just really felt, and the numbers talk about how the funding has been. There's some disparities in there where the money is going to, to help fund roads. So all of these principles have been agreed upon by the five counties and this is what we will be talking on tomorrow with legislators.
Okay.
Joe, is there anything you wanted to throw in on that?
Yeah, Commissioner, I would, I would also mention too that, again, we have five counties that we're working with on this, on these items. So, you know, we may not all agree 100% with each county on all items that are important right now, but these were the, these were the elements and principles that all five counties could buy off on and support together as a group, so.
Yeah, I think there's, there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, where the funding goes and that sort of thing. I know there's a lot of discussion right now about new revenue. I think this, this document plays more towards, you know, where existing revenue should go and that equal distribution, which I think, when you lay it out and you look at, you know, percentages received outstate versus urban versus collar, I think that, that it's pretty clear that, that we've had to, essentially on the backs of our taxpayers here in the collar counties, you know, we've done the work, we've had to do the work, but we've had to find the money locally here as opposed to some of the funding, some of the revenue sources that currently exist today. And of course, there are some that propose additional funding sources. Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just think the, I saw the statistic and I don't have it in front of me now, but the, the one that really calls it out glaringly is the quarter of Congress funding. The legislature has set aside this big pot of money that gets sold out by MnDOT, but it goes to greater Minnesota and Hennepin and Ramsey County. And the Ring Counties, the collar counties, get almost none of it. I mean, if I recall correctly, it was like 3% or less coming to the Ring Counties, the five, five of the most populous counties excluding Hennepin and Ramsey, and we're not getting those dollars. And that's just, that's just a part of that funding. It's not all of it. It's just a part of it. But it does, I mean, to these principles, it's important to the five counties that we start getting that share of transportation funding. These principles are pretty broad so that everybody could agree to them, but they all focus centrally on we're being shorted funding and we're having to be really creative to get our projects done. And there's nothing wrong with that. Innovation and creativity is good, but at the same time, we're losing too many projects because we're not getting the funding and it is going to Hennepin and Ramsey County and outstate Minnesota.
Also, I will note that I, since we're talking statistics, I think it was 40% of legislators are new down there right now. Is it 40%?
Yeah, something like that.
Seems like a huge number. But this is kind of an educational piece for them to understand kind of the, what history has been and how we should probably tweak that to be a little fairer going into the future here. So this is as much for the new legislators to bring them up to speed and as it is the existing legislators that have been part of this, you know, sausage making that's happened over the years and, and some of the challenges associated with that. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick clarification to my statistics. It's 0.3%. 0.3% comes to the Ring Counties for quarters of Congress.
Even better.
That's the definition of disparities.
Is there any further discussion on these principles? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And if I could, I'll go to my chair report. Just one item. Consider authorizing the county engineer to advertise for bids for project, the replacement of the bridge on Cassa Eighteen, which is Coon Creek Boulevard over Coon Creek in the city of Coon Rapids. And Joe will tell you all why we are bringing this as a chair's report so we can hopefully get some really good bids.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Moved by Commissioner Schulte. Second by Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you. Yeah, members of the board, so this item, we've talked about numerous times. This is a bridge that's been around since the late 70s, early 80s. If you go out and you visit the bridge, you can actually see why we're replacing it. There's a transverse crack along both spans of that bridge that's starting to form on the deck. Doesn't mean the bridge is going to fall down, but it needs replacement. So we've been working over the course of the last couple of years to develop plans to replace this bridge. Currently, it's what they call a slab span bridge. So it's essentially what it sounds like. It's a concrete slab that's reinforced with steel, holding it up. So a crack going through that, not a good thing. What we're going to replace it with, after looking at a bunch of different options, is there's piling in the ground that's holding up the existing bridge. We're going to pound some additional piling into that because there's somewhere between 50 and 80 feet of peat, which is great for growing lawn, but not so much for holding a road or a bridge. So we're going to pound additional piling to hold, we're going to build essentially a structure underneath and we're going to put reinforced concrete box culverts, three of them, to pass the water underneath. And that'll be the new bridge system. The nice thing with that is too is if, if the piling were to move or the soils were to move a little bit, since it's not a rigid bridge and you have three separate boxes, there's a little bit of forgiveness there. And also, the maintenance on box culverts is very minimal. It's very minimal. They're strong. They've proven their, proven their worth over many years. So they have typically 100-year life expectancy. So it's an expensive project mainly due to the soils that we're working with. But as Commissioner Brassad mentioned, we want to get this out early. Depending on what happens with legislature, there could be new bridge bond money. If that takes place, there'll be a bunch of bridges that are on the waiting list, ready to get bids. So we're hopeful if we get out early, we can get good bids.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Yep, Commissioner Gamash.
Just a quick question, kind of following on the Viking Boulevard train thing. If we do get this going, this is going to be, need to be a full closure, I'm sure, so with detours around. And for those of us who have enjoyed the roller coaster ride over that bridge for many years, I'm assuming it's going to be flatter, but perhaps not completely flat, but I'm guessing that it won't be quite the, the hump that we're used to driving over. But it's good, I'm glad that we're able to move forward on it. I look forward to getting that done. And I know that when we do close roads and do detours or try to keep the detours to the county roads and that's move people through city streets, I'm assuming you've got some good plans from your department and don't be letting people know, but that's kind of a major thoroughfare into Andover and parts of Coon Rapids as well. So just make sure people are prepared.
Yep.
Thank you, Joe.
Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my Transportation Committee reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Okay, so we had this under.
Management.
Under the chair's comments, we had this Administrative Professionals Days. We talked a little bit about their ability to multitask, problem solve and remain calm. And, and under the Management Committee. And, and under the management committee, evidently there was a second page to this, which I missed. So, let's go back to that additional county board agenda item on your sheet there. And this would be item D and item E. Item D is a restructure fill, human services, public health, and environmental services, where they're going from .8 FTE, full-time employee, .8 of a full-time employee position of senior prevention outreach specialist, and adding a .2 FTE, senior prevention outreach specialist, and combining the two and going to a 1.0 FTE, senior prevention outreach specialist.
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Reiner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item E is to authorize a county engineer to place an order for one tandem axle truck, one single axle plow truck, one aerial truck, one medium-duty truck, and one salt mixer, I'm sorry, one salt mixer and one deer-removal trailer as provided in the draft 2024 capital allocation budget. We're not in 2024 as of yet, but we do understand the long lead times that are associated with these vehicles right now. And, and so we're trying to get ahead of that. Order it early so it'll come in just in time. And that's our hope, of course, is that it does come in just in time. So, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Reiner, second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion. Commissioner Reiner?
And in discussion too, it was, you know, stated that these dollars do not affect this year's budget, but then will be, you know, affecting the '24 budget as it should.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And that now does conclude the additional county board agenda item. And we will move into finance. The finance committee, finance report, and we have a couple of action items there. The first is the committee recommends the county board approve contract C triple zero 9931 with Morcon Construction for mechanical and electrical work to be done for the decentralization efforts at the Rem River Campus in an amount not to exceed $2.2,728,500. And with a project contingency of 7% or roughly $200,000 in that. As folks will recall, we are in the process of decentralizing the very large and inefficient boiler that we have out there. We're moving to boilers for each individual cottage or building, more efficient. And so this is part of that decentralization effort that's going on right now. Very costly, but with the asbestos and everything involved, that's usually not an inexpensive proposition. Mr. Chair, move approval. Commissioner Schulte moves approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item two is the committee recommends the county board approve the following master furniture contracts for design, supply, install, and moving, given the county maximum flexibility. There are three that are on there. Alternative business furniture, interium, and all furniture. And this essentially gives us options for, I know we do a lot of furniture that's been rehabilitated furniture, so used furniture that they repaint and reupholster and, and make available. There's some significant savings on that. But sometimes that's not always available, and there's other sources that we need to go to. So, this is master furniture contracts for these three. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. That'll conclude the finance report. We'll move on to human services, Commissioner Reiner.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. My committee met on April 18th at 8:30 a.m., and there were no public comments before you today. We do have some consent and regular items. First, we have three consent items that are under economic assistance, social services, and community corrections. These are routine payments, and I would move their approval.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reiner, second by Commissioner Brassad. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Okay, next on our agenda is under, one action item under job training center, and this is to consider recommending the county board apply for and accept Department and Employment and Economic Development, DED, youth at work grant contract number C triple zero 9892 in the amount not to exceed $294,300. This is for, to expand program services to additional in-school and out-of-school youth with enhanced focus on career exploration for post-secondary education. Program priorities are to provide students with information about education and training requirements for careers in high-growth and in high-demand occupations. It is a two-year program. Grant is, grant dollars are coming from the state, and all contracts should be in place by July 1st of this year.
Move approval. Moved by Commissioner Schulte?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Discussion? You know, I, I think, I'm trying to recall back, you know, to when I was graduating and kind of that whole concept of what am I going to do? Or what should, you know, what should my profession be? And to have grant dollars like this to help guide these students into, hey, did you know that you can make significant dollars in this field? Or whatever the case is, and give them that direction? Or give them some hints, give them, you know, plant the seeds, if you will? I think it's phenomenal. Kind of helps, helps them along that, I think, a challenging process of trying to, what do you want to be when you grow up? I mean, I don't know that it's an easy question to, to answer. And especially when you're not necessarily thinking about it as youth. But anyways, I think this is a great, great grant and, and certainly something we should be supporting. So anyways, any further discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. Item five.
All right, this is under human services. Our committee recommends that the county board adopt resolution number 2023 HS4 establishing budget allocations for Anoka County opioid settlement funds. I'm sure folks remember for years, there's been a lawsuit going on with the federal government suing various drug companies. And that's over with now, then they had to figure out how, what to do with the money. I think it was 26 billion nationally was awarded. Minnesota got about 300 million, and Anoka County is going to end up with 20 million. We don't get it as a lump sum, though. It's going to be doled out over an 18-year period for treatment and prevention. With a 7% holdback for administration and legal fees, we're going to end up with $18,600, or $600,000 over 18 years, so about a million bucks a year. Funding source is state grant.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I would offer it.
Offered by Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Schulte?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, for some clarification, is there are multiple lawsuits, and they're still ongoing. There were with the manufacturers and then with the distributors. And so there's a, I won't say a plethora, but there's a lot of lawsuits going on still. And the money comes in in a lot of different fashions, depending on which company settles and how they settle. So, yes, many of it comes in over 18 years. Some companies chose they wanted paid out over seven years. So, we'll get some money over seven or eight years. But again, it's, this is a multifaceted, multi-pronged litigation. We have secured counsel to do this. We've worked closely with the Association of Minnesota Counties to make sure that these negotiations happen in a way that benefited counties, seeing as we're the deliverer of services that help these people that are addicted to opioids because of this crisis that developed. And so I'm proud to, to move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion? I know there's some limitations on how we can spend this money in terms of prevention, treatment, and other strategies. So, there's some very specific requirements. We can't, for example, build roads with it. We have to redirect it back into some of the challenges associated with, with the issues created by opioids. Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a quick follow-up. AMC worked very closely to make sure that those weren't too strict, that we're able to use those for public health purposes when it relates to addictions. So, it's not going to be specifically just opioid and opioid abuse only. It's broadened quite a bit through AMC's work, which, which helps us. Again, we're not going to build buildings, we're not going to build roads or bridges, but it does help a part of our community that was gravely hurt through the opioid crisis.
Okay. So, you have a resolution before us establishing budget allocations for the Anoka County opioid settlement funds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Item six.
All right, last but not least, the committee recommends the county board adopt resolution 2023 HS7. And this is proclaiming May 2023 as Older Americans Month in Anoka County. And I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas Anoka County is a community in which it is established more than 59,700 citizens, 65 or older, make Anoka County their home. Whereas older Americans of Anoka County are valuable members of our society and are rich with abilities, experience, and are a vital part of our community. And whereas older Americans of Anoka County contribute to the health and well-being of our community through volunteerism. And whereas Anoka County supports and recognizes the valuable contribution which older Americans make through volunteerism by sponsoring the retired and senior volunteer program since 1973. Whereas policymakers and residents in the county are striving to recognize the evolving needs of our older citizens and their caregivers. And now therefore be it resolved that Anoka County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of May 2023 as Older Americans Month in Anoka County. And I'd like to move that.
Okay, the resolution's been offered by Commissioner Reiner, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? That motion passes.
Rest of my report is informational. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Reiner. We'll move on to the information technology committee report, and Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The IT committee met on April 18th. Out here at 10:30 a.m., there was no public comment, and we just had informational items on the agenda regarding some Microsoft licensing options and an MOU with PCs for people. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. We'll move on now to the public safety report, and Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on April 12th, and there was no public comment at this committee meeting. Our first item is that the committee recommends adoption of resolution 2023-PS03, resolution declaring April 30th as Therapy Animal Day in Anoka County. And I'll offer this resolution, but it was fun. There's, there's Dino from our county attorney's office, and he got to make a special guest appearance last week at County Day. And it is amazing just how you can see the temperament of everybody in the room when Dino came in. It was just, they kind of took a breath, they relaxed. And he's just the most adorable lab ever. But we know therapy animals are, are successful, and they, they certainly serve and have many benefits. So, happy to offer this. This is something we started last year as a request by one of our, our constituents, so.
Okay, the resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. I, I do know that, that when Dino was brought in, he was paying special attention to Commissioner Brassad, I think, because she is a former black lab owner, and, and I think he somehow knew that. But the kids were very interested, obviously, in, in the dog. And, and I mean, unbelievable training that went into this, this, this dog, so. And can-do canines, to give them a little plug. We're the trainers for this, this dog. And I don't know, you know, if our county attorney wants to talk a little bit about kind of the role and function that it performs in the office. It's a professional, so.
Yeah, Dino, thank you, Commissioner Luck, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dino is a new employee in our office. He is finishing up his certification. He is, he is not just a pet. He is a valued member of the team. As a matter of fact, we have to resist the temptation to do all those things that you would do when you normally see a dog like Dino, like scratch his ears or, you know, pet him or whatever. When he's wearing that red cape that you saw in the picture there, that means he's on duty. So, what Dino does is he works with our victim-witness group in our office, who are the people that are responsible for helping shepherd through our criminal justice system the victims of serious crime. Usually, Dino is tasked out to those that are victims of violent crime, significant assaults, sexual assaults, things like that. And he is a calming influence on those people and gives them a certain amount of reassurance. He has already started to make impacts. He has also been available to other county departments as well when they go through traumatic incidents, including our sheriff's office and, and other parts of the county, too. I really think that he is going to show a significant value to the office and to the county. We're excited to have him with us, and, and I appreciate the recognition.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, so we have a resolution in front of us, a resolution declaring April 30th, 2023, as Therapy Animal Day in Anoka County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That resolution passes. Item two.
The committee recommends approval and execution of a memorandum of understanding for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as the JEG program. This is a local solicitation between the city of Coon Rapids, city of Fridley, and Anoka County in the amount of $25,324. Anoka County is the, the organization that receives this grant, but it's just a pass-through to both Coon Rapids and Fridley.
Move approval. The motion's been made by Commissioner Schulte?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. This is for contract C triple zero 9854. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Item three.
My last item is the committee recommends approval and execution of the 2023 State of Minnesota Annual County Boat and Water Safety Grant Contract Agreement in the amount of $23,565 for a term of January 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. of 23,565 for a term of January 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. And this is a contract that we've received, grant we've received many times.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Moved by Commissioner Reiner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte, this is for contract C triple zero 9885. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.